I'm only seeing Councilmember Castle. Is anyone else in yet?
Yes.
I'm in.
You?
Yeah, I'm in.
Yeah, I'm in.
We're all in.
I'm here.
Now I can see at least four.
Quiet, Chewie.
Karen, is that everyone then?
Um, hold on just a second. Trying to make sure that we've got everybody in. I believe everybody is in.
Great, thank you. Welcome everyone to the City Council meeting for the City of Evans, May 5th, 2020. I am Brian Rudy, the mayor. I'll call the meeting to order. Please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Roll call, please.
Mayor Rudy?
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim Clark?
Here.
Councilmember Spear?
Here.
Councilmember Johnson?
Present.
Councilmember Neil?
Virtually present.
Councilmember Castle?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Before we get started, City Clerk, would you like to review the procedures in a virtual meeting, please?
Sure. All participants should ensure their cellphones are silent. Even vibrations are picked up by the microphone. The meeting is being recorded. All attendees that have login via the Zoom website or called in using the assigned number are muted and can only be unmuted by the host. All panelists are not muted, but it's good practice to mute yourself until you're ready to speak. All attendees will show up on the participant list. To request permission to speak, an attending must raise their hand by clicking on the raise hand button at the bottom of the screen. Attendees calling in must enter star nine pound on their phone and a raised hand will appear on their behalf and be monitored by the host. The clerk will inform the mayor and the mayor will call on the person or the phone number that has raised their hand when they are identified to speak and the host will then unmute that individual. When the mayor acknowledges a participant and the host unmutes said participant, state your name, address, and state your question or concern. Once you have stated your question, opinion, or concern, a response will be provided and the host will again mute you once the mayor has moved on to another question or close questioning. If you wish to speak another time, you will need to raise your hand again. Individuals may also use the chat feature in the Zoom application to make public comments that will be read into the record by the city clerk. If using the chat function, please provide your name, address, along with your question, comment, or concern. An email can also be submitted to the city clerk at kforley@evanscolorado.gov anytime up to and throughout the City Council meeting. This can also be done via phone at 970-475-1104 with a cutoff time of 6:15 PM. All comments provided will be read into record during the audience participation portion of the meeting. It's imperative that all attendees follow directions and maintain meeting decorum.
Thank you very much, Karen. Next item on the agenda is Audience Participation. City Clerk, do we have anyone in the audience who wish to participate?
I do not have anybody.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda is Approval of the Agenda. Are there any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes to the agenda.
I move to approve the agenda.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Rudy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda is Consent Agenda. Item A, Approval of the April 21st, 2020 Central City Council Meeting Minutes.
I move to approve Consent Agenda.
I second.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve the Consent Agenda. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Rudy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you, City Clerk. Next item on the agenda, New Business. Item A, Public Hearing. Consideration of Ordinance Number 713-20 to Implement Ballot Issue 2A Approving a 1% Increase in Sales Tax and Use Tax. And I will open the public hearing and hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. As council is aware, Measure 2A, the referendum on our April ballot passed with a 67% margin. The next step in order to making that tax measure and the revenue we need for streets available is to pass an ordinance that makes the provisions of that new tax into our law. So that's what we have tonight. The timing of the ordinance tonight will enable us to have time to, I have this reading tonight, if council passes it, have a second reading and then make sure that we can inform all of our businesses paying sales tax in order to have that tax effective on July 1st. So as a recap, just for the public, as much as for the council, with this ordinance, the sales tax would be increased from 3.5% to 4.5%. That's the Evans portion of the sales tax. All of the revenue from the tax would be used exclusively for road maintenance and safety improvements and road widenings and paving dirt roads over time. And the sales tax will be effective, be in effect, from July 1, 2020 through June 30, 2027. I'll also note that this ordinance also creates the fund that we're calling the Road Improvement Tax Fund and all of the revenue from the tax will be maintained from this fund. Just to underscore what that means, the money will be kept away from the city's general fund and any other money for any other purpose so that we can maintain the expenditures only out of this fund and report to the City Council and the public as often as the council desires. With that, Mayor, we have Ordinance Number 71320 for your consideration. I'd be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Jim. This is a public hearing. City Clerk, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this issue?
There is not.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition of this issue?
No.
Great, thank you. Counsel, do we have any questions for city staff? We will have comments afterwards. Are there any questions? Councilmember Spear, you're the only one I can't see on my screen, so I don't have your hand. If you have any, please ask.
No questions, thank you.
Great, thank you. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing, open up for council discussion. I just want to quickly thank the citizens of Evans for entrusting this council and this city's staff. With this 1% sales tax increase, we will make our roads better with it. I give you my word, that is what this money will be used for. It will not be used for anything else and we will have some nicer, smoother, and better roads here in the city of Evans. Other council comments?
I would agree with what you said, Mr. Mayor, and I want to thank the city residents as well for voting this in. I'm, of course, in favor of this and I'm looking forward to the major improvements that we're going to have on our roadways.
Any other comments by council?
Mr. Mayor, Councilmember Neil, I would like to recommend that we notify the residents of what we're doing with this money at least twice a year, if not quarterly. I'm not sure how the rest of the council feels about that, but I feel we definitely need to put out something to the public so that they know what we're doing with the money, where it's going.
Absolutely, Councilmember Neil, and I know Jim has stated it before that there will be at least two, if not more, work sessions showing this council where this money is going. I know we're also working on a plan to, when we do start working on the roads, have signage up that signifies that this money is being used from this 1% sales tax increase on this project. So I think we're all in agreement and thank you, Councilmember Neil, for bringing it up that we will need to be very transparent and show our citizens exactly what this money is being used for and what we're doing with it. So for Jim, do you have anything to add to that?
Nothing further, Mayor. I think you're right. You and all the council members have been very direct about our need to be transparent and report frequently. So that's what we'll do.
Great, thank you, Jim. Any other comments from council?
I also want to extend how grateful I am to our residents for passing and voting for this measure. This will definitely allow us to continue improving our city and again, thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else?
Yes, I just wanted to say thank you as well and particularly to all of those residents that helped to get the word out as to why this was so important to councils past and present and really to everybody who lean in. It was a long, hard haul and I so appreciate the residents assisting in getting this passed. So thanks to all.
Absolutely. Any other comments or questions?
I also want to extend my thank you to the committee, the Task Force Committee, that assisted with the dissemination of information and also met probably every other week during this time to get the word out and definitely assisted us in getting this passed. That's all I have.
Thank you, Councilmember. Anyone else? Seeing none, I entertain a motion.
I move up to Ordinance Number 713-20 on first reading.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve Ordinance Number 713-20 on first reading. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Rudy?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Great, thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Item B, Public Hearing. Withdrawal of the Ordinance Clarifying Pad Site Setback Requirements in Recreational Vehicle Parks. And I will open the public hearing and hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. We have been working on an ordinance that would clarify one piece of our RV park ordinance that we feel could be a little bit unclear to applicants. That does, that kind of addresses how we measure setbacks. However, and since we did start to publicize the potential council action on that draft ordinance, which is why we need to come to tonight and then request withdrawal of the ordinance. As we thought about the timing, we realized that we are still working through the details of our first RV park application with which the council is familiar, I believe, with which one that is. And we think it's best if we don't change anything right now. We're working to fairly interpret the setback definition. We feel it's going to work for all parties and we'll just plan to get back to council with this potential code change to clarify that definition once we get past everything associated with this first RV park application. So really, the reason it's before you tonight is because it was advertised, but we are requesting the council withdraw this item from the agenda at this time and will bring this matter back to you at an appropriate time in the future. That concludes my remarks, Mayor.
Great, thank you, Jim. And as Jim said, this wasn't advertised, so this is a public hearing. So before we move to that as a council, City Clerk, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
None.
Thank you. City Clerk, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition of this item?
There is none.
Thank you. Counsel, does anyone want to make a motion?
I move to withdraw the ordinance clarifying pad site setback requirements in recreational vehicle parks and to reschedule and renotice the public hearing at a future City Council meeting to be determined.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion of second to withdraw the ordinance clarifying pad site setback requirements in recreational vehicle parks and to reschedule and renotice the public hearing at a future City Council meeting to be determined. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember here?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
The motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, Public Hearing. Consideration of Ordinance Number 714-20, An Ordinance Amending Planning Commission and Zoning Board of Appeals provisions in the City's Charter and Code to Reflect the Outcome of a Charter Amendment Election and to Authorize Appointment of Alternative Members to the Planning Commission. I will open the public hearing and hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. Just a quick intro for me. This item addresses several issues that we've been working on to, I think, strengthen our planning commission capacity and also clarify some of the past council and community actions around planning commission, the board of zoning appeals. I'm saying this intro because I want to thank our city attorney, Scott Krab, for research he's done to help us clarify these issues and I'll ask him to make this presentation on the ordinance tonight.
Thank you, Jim. Members of council and Mayor Rudy, as the city manager mentioned, this ordinance addresses two issues that relate to the planning commission and the zoning board of appeals. It amends the city's charter to reflect the outcome of a charter election that happened back in 2014. Before 2014, if you were a member of the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals, you could not hold any other office in connection with the city. In 2014, a charter amendment was approved by the voters that said if you were a member of the planning commission or the zoning board of appeals, you could hold any other position with the city other than city council. So that enables members to serve on either or both of those committees. So the proposed ordinance contains amendments to the city charter to reflect that if you are on planning commission or ZBA, you can hold any other position. And then it also amends the corresponding sections of the city code that govern if you are a planning commission or a zoning board of adjustment member, your ability to serve on other commissions within the city other than city council. So that's the first issue addressed is the outcome of the 2014 charter election. Then the second issue, you may recall, there's been some discussions with staff about the ability of the planning commission to obtain a quorum at its meetings. The planning commission is an important step for land use considerations and land use applications. Typically, those go to the planning commission for a recommendation, so it's essential that the planning commission be able to operate. To help address the need to ensure a quorum, if a planning commission meeting is called, the staff has recommended that the city code be amended to allow the appointment of an alternate member of the planning commission. The alternate member of the planning commission would receive the planning commission packet. They could participate in discussions at planning commission meetings even if their vote is not needed for quorum and if fewer than five regular members are present, then the alternate member could also vote on the issues before the planning commission. And that's the essence of what the ordinance does and I will be glad to answer any questions that council may have.
Okay, thank you. City Attorney Krab, this is a public hearing. Clerk, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in favor of this item?
There is none.
Thank you. Clerk, is there anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition of this item?
There's none.
Great, thank you. Counsel, questions for staff or city attorney?
I have none.
I have none.
Thank you. Seeing no questions, I will close the public hearing and open up for council discussion.
I think it's a pretty straightforward ordinance. We've discussed it before in our work sessions and I'm in favor of it.
I agree.
I also agree. I'm also in favor.
Now I'm in favor of it as well. Unfortunately, sometimes we've ran into situations where we haven't had enough people to have a quorum to get those votes and it set us back on a couple meetings that we really needed to get moved forward. I think this is really going to help in that. I do hope we can get some other applicants for some of our boards so we can fill those up as well, especially the alternates. There's no other discussion. I'd entertain a motion.
I move to approve Ordinance 714-20. Second.
Second.
I have a motion of second to approve Ordinance 714-20. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Rudy?
Aye.
Mayor Clark?
Aye.
Council?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
The motion passes seven to zero.
Great, thank you. Next item on the agenda, Item D, Consideration of Resolution Number 11-2020 approving an intergovernmental agreement with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding funding for the 37th Street Overlay Project. And we'll hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor, and I will ask Assistant City Manager Randy Reedy to provide an overview of this important step on a very important project and to get your support at the conclusion.
Thank you, Jim. Yes, this item is before you as Resolution Number 112020 that would approve an intergovernmental agreement with CDOT for the funding that's available from the Surface Transportation Block Grant Fund for the 37th Street Overlay Project. You're very familiar with this project. It does extend the entire project from 23rd Avenue to Highway 5 and then from east of Highway 85 to the Union Pacific Railroad tracks. Over the CDOT portion of this work, the funding will be applied to the section from 17th Avenue working to the east. It does include a great deal of concrete work, rotor milling, and then finally replacement of the asphalt pavement in this entire area. What's before you is what we're calling a substantially complete, excuse me, IGA. It does lack some details in the exhibits. However, we do not believe that that should hold up your approval in order that we can get this approved and expedited and save a couple weeks, shave a couple weeks off the project by moving forward. We would ask for your approval only with the understanding that the city attorney will review any minor changes between this draft that you're seeing now and the final. We are expecting that we'll get that final in the next few days and we're working with CDOT so that we'll have final approval of the IGA as well as execution and signing yet this month, in the month of May. This is a standard current contract with CDOT. The current contracts go for 10 years, so this one would expire in May of 2030. But that's really academic for us because the construction phase will end by the end of 2020 and then we're setting aside another year to complete all the documentation and records to be in final shape for CDOT. Lesson learned from the previous project, we will all discuss with you. So construction by the end of 2020, we're expecting a final phase by December 21 for all of the other paperwork that's required. This does come from a 2016 Call for Projects from the Metropolitan Planning Organization. The amount of funding available here is $982,141 in state and federal funding. It's matched by $204,163 and then an additional $621,859 for the Evans portion, which would go all the way from 11th Avenue to the railroad tracks. So we are asking for your authorization of three steps tonight. Your approval of the substantially complete IGA and the resolution, authorizing the mayor to sign it and authorizing the city attorney to approve any minor nonsubstantive changes between this draft and the final that you'll see in the next few weeks. That's all we have for the meeting unless there are questions. Thank you.
Great, thank you very much, Randy. Questions or comments? Start with Mayor Pro Tim Clark.
I'm in complete favor of this. I'm glad that we have made some progress to get this IGA completed and hopefully expedite it so we can get that work started on 37th Street and hopefully get this project done in a timely manner. That's all I got.
Yeah, thank you. Councilmember Spear?
Yeah, I just need some clarification on what an example of a approved minor nonsubstantive change would be.
Scott?
Sure. So if it doesn't change any of the guts of the agreement about the amount that's going to be paid or the dates that are going to be either the start date or the end date, but if it is, for example, a change in the time period that you have to turn in your receipts. If it's something that is minor and procedural, then that would be nonsubstantive. If it changes the obligations of either the city or the state, that would be substantive and we would bring it back to the council.
Okay, thank you. I was just making sure that it didn't include something like, you know, $20,000 here or there or, you know, changes in dates and stuff. So thank you very much.
Sure.
Councilmember Neil?
Well, Mark stole my thunder. I'm glad that we're moving forward on this. I've become very much concerned that there might be some delays with this, but I'm glad we're moving forward with it and we seem to be having a better relationship with CDOT. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Johnson?
I also agree with everyone. I am glad this is moving forward and thank you to our attorney, Scott Krab, for explaining the minor, what was that, the minor changes. But I am in favor of this. I am definitely, I'm ready for this to get moving. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mortensen?
I have no questions, but I'm ready to get moving on this project, so yeah.
Perfect. Councilmember Castle?
I just echo what everybody else is saying. I'm looking forward to moving forward.
Yep. Now I'm going to echo all that. Let's get this road done and pretty. If there are no other questions or comments, I'd entertain a motion.
I move-
I move, go ahead, Tammy.
Sorry. I move to adopt Resolution Number 11-2020 approving the substantially complete IGA with the Colorado Department of Transportation regarding funding for the 37th Street Overlay Project. Further, I move that the mayor is authorized to sign the agreement and the city attorney is authorized to approve minor nonsubstantive changes required prior to execution by CDOT.
Second.
Second.
I have a motion of second to adopt Resolution Number 11-2020 approving the substantial complete IGA with Colorado Department of Transportation regarding funding for the 37th Street Overlay Project. Further, I move that the mayor is authorized to sign an agreement and the city attorney is authorized to approve minor nonsubstantive changes required prior to execution by CDOT. Roll call vote, please.
Mayor Rudy?
Aye.
Tim Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson? Councilmember Neil?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
The motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda, Item E, Consideration of Award of Bid 17th Avenue Waterline Replacement Project. Next item on the agenda, item E, consideration of award of bid 17th Avenue Waterline Replacement Project. And we will hear from staff.
Thank you, Mayor. This is a very important waterline project that will make a big difference in our maintenance efforts. This would be a new waterline construction on 17th Avenue between 34th and 37th Streets. I won't steal all of the city, the city engineer's fun, uh, thunder, but I will just put, put the headline on it that this section of waterline has had two water main breaks in the last year and five breaks in the past six years due to corrosive soils. So I know that our maintenance staff has had their eye on this one for quite a while and it will be good to move this project forward. With that, I'll ask our city engineer, Mark Oberschmidt, to just give an overview of the project and the bidding process and the outcome. And following that, we'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thanks, Jim. Mayor, members of council, thanks for having me. Yeah, as Jim said, we're looking to replace this ductile iron pipe, which has been in the ground a little over 30 years. Ductile iron is susceptible to hot soils and therefore it can get corroded and pitted and causing it to break. So that's why you've had two breaks in the last year and five in the last six years or so. So that's something that we want to avoid. So PVC is a much better pipe in those kinds of soils. So we're looking to replace that ductile iron pipe with PVC pipe. In the bidding process, we received two bids. One of the bids, well, let me back up. We, we originally bid this project as a first, first project where we would burst the existing pipe in place and pull a new pipe through. And that's the original bids that we got. The two bids that we received, one of them was not fully responsive, so we had to disqualify that bidder. The other bid came in and is, is a qualified contractor, is a solid contractor. I've worked with them in, in the past. They came in and then we talked to them about their bid because there was a couple of unit costs that we were a little questioning about. And so we talked to them a little bit and we came up with an idea where we could save some money and still get the same PVC product in the ground but not have as much cost for the city. So we saved, by doing a little value engineering with the contractor and coordination, we saved about $50,000 off their original bid. The original bid was $720,000 and they came in after we did the value engineering, about $666,000. So they're going to get, assuming you guys approve this contract, they'll do an open cut system where they'll just open cut like they did along 37th Street. But they'll move, we're estimating probably 80 to 100 feet a day of pipe. And as they go, they'll be backfilling and if they get across in front of anybody's driveway, they'll put a metal plate. So all the driveways will be accessible on the west side since the waterline is on the west side. Traffic will be primarily routed over to the north side of the, or the eastbound, east side, northbound lanes. We've already reached out to the property owners on this block once back in December and then in the last couple of weeks, we sent out another letter. We'll be, we'll be posting on Facebook. The contractor will be putting out door hangers ahead of the project. So we're, we're, we're well in advance of letting people know that it's happening. We'll be putting stuff up on social media here in the near future. I think this is going to be a great project for the city. Rick Picard, who kind of helps run the, the grant, the 37th Street Utility Project and was very effective in keeping that thing moving even when we ran into problems and making decisions so that we could keep it going. He's going to be running it for me on the ground. The contractor, as I said, is a solid contractor. I've worked with them in the past and they know what they're doing. We expect to get started, assuming the contract's approved first of June. And the contractor is telling me that it's six to eight weeks, maybe less, to actually do the construction. So we will be done before school starts in August. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Great, thank you very much. Questions or comments? Start with councilmember Spear.
Yes. I noticed that, that, well, I think what we're talking about has patchwork on the asphalt anyway. Is that where that's at? Where it's got the middle of the, the lane. I guess it's on 17th. Where are we at? 17th and.
It's between 34th and 37th. Yeah, between 34th and 37th. It's on the west side of the road.
Yeah. Yeah. And so after we do this replacement, is it still going to be patched work? Or are we planning on putting asphalt over the top so that it looks, um, less torn up and repaired?
At this time, we're just going to pass back the trench all the way through there. That, it turned out it was cheaper to do it that way than the pipe bursting, which the pipe bursting would have ended up with a bunch of individual patches wherever there was a service at each house. So you would have seen 13 or 14 patches, whereas here you will see one continuous patch from north to south and then one where we connect over to a hydrant. It turned out to be, I think part of the reason that the price came down was because asphalt's coming down slightly due to the fact that the oil is not doing so well.
So I just would like.
I will, we will complete the intersection of 34th and 17th. So that will be all new asphalt in that intersection.
Okay. Yeah, so I guess I would like to throw it out there that maybe we can consider that a project where we can seal over it or, you know, do what we need to do to make it look more complete and, and one, instead of, you know, the patch that we see there today. So anyways, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Johnson?
I echo councilmember Spear's concerns. That's all, thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mortensen?
I had the same concerns, but my questions weren't answered, so I'm good.
Thank you. Councilmember Castle?
Nothing further from me.
Councilmember Neal?
Well, having experienced some of the breaks, I, I, I know that the residents along there will be very pleased to get this done and also city staff because a couple of these breaks were in the middle of winter. So they were out there trying to do something with the mess created by the waterline breaks. That's it.
Thank you. Mayor Pro Tem Clark?
I have no questions. Thank you.
And I don't either. It just sounds like a great project and makes a lot of sense. No other questions or comments? I'd entertain a motion.
I move to award the 17th Avenue Waterline Replacement Project contract to Global Underground and to authorize a mayor's signature on an agreement in the amount of $666,970 with a 10% contingency to be assessed with city manager's approval to handle unforeseen circumstances resulting in a not to exceed amount of $733,667 for this project.
Second.
I have a motion of second to award the 17th Avenue Waterline Replacement Project contract to Global Underground and authorize a mayor's signature on an agreement in the amount of $666,970 with a 10% contingency to be assessed with city manager approved approval to handle unforeseen circumstances resulting in a not to exceed amount of $733,667 for this project. Roll call vote, please. Aye.
Mayor Pro Tem Clark?
Aye.
Councilmember Spear?
Aye.
Councilmember Johnson?
Aye.
Councilmember Neal?
Aye.
Councilmember Castle?
Aye.
Councilmember Mortensen?
Aye.
Motion passes with a vote of seven to zero.
Thank you. Next item on the agenda, report, city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. In the spirit of some feedback I've heard over the past few weeks, I want to let council know that we are developing a capital projects report that will be regularly brought to the city council periodically, either monthly or quarterly. The first one will, will be a subject of a work session within your next two meetings. But in the meantime, I've also been reminded that there's a lot of good stuff in the manager, in the weekly manager's updates. And this is a time of year when there's lots of design happening and I think the, the, this week's report shows that. But there are a couple of things that have been recently completed, even at, at this time of year. They are smaller, they're not at the scope of what council usually sees, but I will point out that the, that we've been under some requests for several years to replace the flume that measures the water coming off the river into the Evans ditch. That's important from a, a compliance standpoint and that flume replacement project has been completed in recent weeks. And also I'll, I'll mention, we've had a water pressure, pressure and irrigation situation problem out at Devil's Crossing for several years. And that issue has been resolved also in the past few weeks. So not huge projects, but I just want to point out a couple of things getting done and a lot more in the works. That's all I have, Mayor.
Thank you very much, Jim. City Attorney?
Thank you, Mayor. Members of council, just a couple of items. I'm, I'm happy and surprised that we're still busy with development agreements for several different developments within the city. On behalf of the city, we also filed a, a statement of opposition to a water court application filed by the town of Johnstown, which seeks to change 340 of the 2,000 shares of Home Supply Ditch and Reservoir Ditch Company. We're really just in it to monitor it. We don't have any particular issues with it other than to make sure that it has appropriate terms and conditions to protect the city of Evans water rights. A couple of things on the COVID front. The, it seems to be happening every day or every other day. The CDPHG put out some more guidance on the Safer at Home Directive late yesterday afternoon, which is another 36 pages long. Couple of items that affect municipalities. There is new language that allows employee testing to occur at home through self-screening instead of at the workplace. And there was some clarification that it is up to the city to imply, to provide employee gloves, masks and face coverings that meet OSHA industry standards. And then the final note is CML is doing a really good job of putting on a variety of webinars and their general counsel, David Broadwell, is, is continuing to discuss the various COVID directives. There is a, a webinar tomorrow that's being put on by CML from 12:45 to 1:30 that's planning for reopening on the municipal level that may be of interest to, to members of the public and staff and, and council members. And that's all I've got.
Thank you very much, Scott. City clerk, next item on the agenda is audience participation. Do we have anyone in the audience who wishes to talk to city council on any item?
I have none.
Thank you. Before we adjourn this meeting, I just want to say thank you to one individual. It is my intention, and I'd like to talk to any council members if you feel the need to, to give me a shout over the next week or so, to hold our next city council meeting in chambers. The, the council, the city of Evans building will be opening on the 18th and our next meeting's on the 19th. So it is my intention to have that meeting on the 19th in council chambers. If anybody would like to give me a call, if they don't think that's a good idea, we can figure something out. Give me a shout on that. But before we do that, I do want to take a second to thank our city clerk, Karen. You have made this such a great process. It's, it's got to be tough on you. You put in a lot of work to make these Zoom meetings happen and to have two and three and four Zoom meetings a night, you know, like we had tonight. We had two different work sessions, a council meeting, and we're going to go into ERA meeting here in a second. So Karen, I just want to take a second on behalf of the city council and thank you for all the, you always do great work, but you've really knocked it out of the park. It doesn't seem like we've missed a beat having these meetings over the internet and that's all correlated to you, Karen. So thank you for everything you've done to make this such a good process. And go ahead.
Thank you.
Sure. And with that, I will adjourn this meeting. And does anyone need a one or two minute break here before we go into ERA? It shouldn't take too long, but does anybody want to walk around for a sec?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Okay.
Can I? Just a minute, please.
Sure.
That will also give me a second to do some stuff.